Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. We're happy, Lord, that we can make up a shortfall of water. But, Lord, we just pray, Lord, that the hurricane will fall and center its eye in an area that's non-populated as much as possible. Lord, we do pray for our families, our brothers and sisters of Mexico. We pray, Lord, that this hurricane will not gain any more strength and not go beyond the state of Tampa-Lipas. We pray that Monterey will be saved, the dam up there will be saved. We pray, Lord, for all the people across mid-Mexico. Lord, we pray for today's agenda. We pray for the men and women in this room today that came together to help our community. Lord, direct this hurricane wind, high wind, away from Brownsville and away from Cameron County. But give us that rain that we need, that eight-and-a-half inches that we need to make up. Lord, I pray for safety on the streets, on the highways. I pray, Lord, for the homes, for the families. I pray that common sense will be used over the next 48 hours. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let me take this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, let me just give you a... Hold on. Let me just call. Let me just give you the latest impact weather advisory that came out at nine o'clock. I'll just give you the relevant portions of it. Just in the last hour, we think we're beginning to see a slowly, a slow westerly turn beginning, but it's too early to tell if this is just another wobble. And by the way, what that means is that if there's a westerly turn, it'll come in fifty, sixty, seventy miles from Brownsville. The hurricane, if it doesn't make a westerly turn, it's coming in closer. And so they've been anticipating the westerly turn. Our forecast track remains unchanged, taking the center of Emily inland about sixty to eighty miles south of Brownsville, Texas, near 10:00 PM this evening. While our confidence in the forecast is very good, Emily could still jog as much as thirty to forty miles either side of the track before landfall. Any movement to the north would put significantly stronger wind, perhaps to hurricane force into Brownsville and Port Isabel area. Emily's appearance on satellite is a rapidly intensifying hurricane. In the last few satellite frames, a small, sharp eye has developed. We think that the surface pressures inside Emily will be falling rapidly through the day today, and winds will be increasing very shortly since Emily's center will remain over the water for another 12 hours. We now have little doubt that Emily's winds will reach category-three strength of 115 to 120 miles per hour prior to landfall. Emily's forecast is to produce a storm surge of eight to 12 feet near where the center crosses the coast northward for about 30 to 40 miles. North of this storm surge, strong onshore flow and very large waves moving into the coast may produce tides of three to five feet above normal to Port Isabel and up to two to four feet in the Corpus Christi area. Rainfalls up to three to six inches can be expected in the Brownsville area with less than amounts northward across the Corpus Christi area. And the next advisory will be at three o'clock. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of the storm. We've been working with the different communities to open up shelters. I think that we've handed out somewhere near 45,000 bags or more in Cameron County?
Hundred thousand.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five thousand.
Yesterday and how many today? So about 85,000, about 85,000 bags, you think? In Cameron County? And we, and we still are handing them out until we run out. We ordered another 30,000. Pete, am I right? We ordered another 30,000? So we're going to be handing out bags until we can't, until we run out or until we can't hand them out anymore, based upon storm conditions. We're in discussions right now about opening up the shelters in Brownsville and then possibly in Los Fresnos. There's a list of shelters. Port Isabel has opened up their shelter at the high school, and shelters have been opened up in La Feria, Rio Hondo, and then the three major shelters in Adawa County. We've opened up shelters in Adawa County because we're, we're not ordering an evacuation. We have not ordered an evacuation, but we are informing the public that, you know, if they feel that their situation, their personal situation is not good at their home, that there are shelters available in Adawa County, but if they, at the Kenneth White Middle School admission, at, I think, I can't remember the name of the middle school, in Edinburgh, and at PSJ North. Is it PSJ North?
Yes.
In Far, to receive Cameron County citizens so that if they decide they want to go, there's a place for them to go. And we're encouraging them to make that decision now instead of waiting later on. So that's where we're at. I know some of the media, for some reason, reported that we had ordered an evacuation and have not at any point. We, if you watched our press conference this morning, we went out of our way to say that there was not an evacuation being ordered, but that we felt that the public needed to make a decision quickly if they wanted to leave their homes and that we, in any event, would have shelters open. So we've sent out a press release clarifying that, to make, well, not clarifying that, making sure that they correct their misinformation that they've provided to the public on that issue. And that's kind of where we're at right now. I know we have Senator Lucio here today, wanted to say just a couple of words to us.
Judge, thank you. I'm very pleased to be here with my Cameron County family. As a matter of fact, I used to sit right there where Commissioner Wood sits. Once again, what I've always said, that county government is the closest form of help with the people holds true. What I see here this morning is a very well-organized group, a cohesive group, a united group, and a lot of teamwork, and that's what it takes to address any issue. It's just one time when nothing else matters except helping one another, and that's good. I just want you to know that I've been in contact with the governor's office, Tech Doc, DPS, and with the Colonel Ataway. I gave Ms. Carranza some numbers, and I will be in contact with her and the judge and others, et cetera. You might want to talk to me about any state agencies. But I just wanted to thank you. I think the, as Bob was praying, the thing that came to mind was, and I pray for no one to get hurt, and of course, worse than that, loss of life. This is a very serious hurricane and one that could cause extensive damage to our community. So I would, the one thing that I'm urging people, as I talk to them and as the press stops to me, is for people to stay indoors because people get hurt by flying debris more than anything else. But I'm here to support you, and I believe that under y'all's leadership, and everybody here plays an integral part, by the way, every department, Sheriff Lucio, everyone that's here, the Health Department, plays an integral part, and I'm sure that we're in very good hands, what I see here this morning in Cameron County. So Judge and Commissioners, congratulations for, you know, being the caretakers of the people of Cameron County, and I'm here to assist you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate that, and we appreciate your work in Austin and making sure that South Texas is treated fairly on this school finance issue. And, you know, you've been fighting for us over there, you and our other members of our delegation from Cameron County, and just keep up the good work, and we have confidence that you'll take care of our agenda and make sure that those folks out there don't mess with our stuff.
Judge, Representative Scovar called me last night, and of course, I'm sure he called you also, ready to do anything that he can for us, gave me five different telephone numbers where we could reach him, so I'll pass that on to you.
Yeah, he called me, and Ana from Senator Orning's office called me a little while ago, and I also have received calls from Denise Blanchard and Nina from Congresswoman Ortiz's office offering support as well. So everybody is working closely with us. We, I want to also express a lot of my gratitude to the State Agency, Mr. Colley, the State Emergency Director, has been very, very helpful to us. And I want to also thank, I know, I want them to know this, and we'll send a letter out, but Adawa County and the communities of Adawa County have been extremely supportive. They have opened up three shelters just to receive Cameron County residents. So they're working in conjunction with the Red Cross, but we've gotten enormous amount of cooperation from our friends to the West.
Judge, may I say something? I want to congratulate you, Judge, for doing such a fine job. Every time something like that happens, you roll up your sleeves and you get to work. It's incredible, the organization that you've developed here. I saw it in the collapse of the Causeway, where you got to work real hard and started things moving. I congratulate you for a fine job. Boy, I'm telling you, you even slept here, no?
Well, I felt like I did. I got woken up at four.
You're doing a wonderful, wonderful job. We're very, very happy with your job.
Thank you, Pete. Well, we're all working together. The team here has been working diligently, and I just think that they, they've made sure that everything that can conceivably be done to protect our citizens has been done. I mean, when in the history of Cameron County have you heard 85,000 bags just from Cameron County being not only prepared but delivered and made available to the public? We've, we've been working very closely. We had a meeting last night at seven in the evening, and we had all our law enforcement agencies here present. Our Public Works Department, Department of Transportation, has been working very, very hard. The emergency management team, you know, with Tom Hutchins, they're just, you know, they're making sure that all the needs of the community are, as much as we can, are taken care of. And I will also tell you that we have been working very closely with the individual communities and making joint decisions. Every decision that we make, we're making them together with the individual cities. We had a meeting yesterday with South Porter, Allen, Port Isabel, Laguna Vista, Outdoor Resorts, Bayview, and Los Fresnos, and we make joint decisions on evacuation issues. I've been on the phone today with the city of Brownsville, the mayor, Mayor Eddie Trevino. We're trying to make joint decisions on opening up shelters, you know, and along with the mayor of Winston from Los Fresnos. So everybody's working together to make sure that the public is as protected as we can possibly provide them with protection. And so we hope, as I mentioned yesterday, we're preparing for the worst and hoping for the best, and let's see where that takes us.
And you know, Judge, the other thing I think we need to mention, I'm sure this was going on at all the other warehouses, because at prison four, they were, they worked all night long, and I'm sure they did that countywide. That was awesome. Half of the guys stayed till midnight, the other half came in at midnight and are there now. So, you know, Pete, good job, and you got good people.
Pete's department has done an outstanding job. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. There's one person that signed up for public comments, Doug Pearl. We've got, what is it, three minutes?
Thank you. My name is Doug Pearl with EDI from 26162 in La Feria, Texas. I wanted to address the Commissioners because of a problem I'm having with the irrigation payment for work I did at Brownie Park. Excuse me. This has been an ongoing problem. I gave you all the documentation, shows you the letters that I have written to the contractor. I have had a problem getting payment from back in February. I had to get Mr. Yates involved at that time to get paid because, you know, y'all hadn't paid the contractor, the contractor hadn't filed. I don't know what the problem was at that time, but anyway, I did get some money. But since then, I have been waiting for some money for some repairs that I did back in November and December that were torn up by other construction that was going on at the time, and I can't get anything done. Get the contractor, he says nope, not doing anything. So I just wanted to inform you all because the next thing I'm going to do is follow mechanic's lane, which I know you're never going to sell the park, but I just wanted to make you all aware that there is a problem down there and that me being a subcontractor and you being the owner of the property, that's how we're involved, so.
Well, we'll have somebody check in for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let me just quickly take up item number seven, just to make sure that there's nothing else that we need. Seven considerations, possible action regarding emergency preparations in anticipation of the approaching tropical storm Hurricane Emily. I've given you information as to where we're at right now, and so I don't know whether there's anything, any particular action we need to take at this point. Mark?
Commissioners and County Judge, provide you a list of what has been purchased by what department and what dollar amount. I have the detail of what each purchase is. Right now, we're into an investment of about $45,000, and if y'all want any detail on the individual purchases, I'd be glad to provide it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate the cooperation of your office in getting things right away. We haven't, haven't got a single phone call from anybody. Everybody just calling your office, and it's getting done, and that's where we need to do it.
Thank you.
Judge, the only comment I'd like to make on that is I would hope that our folks, department heads, whoever's responsible for determining how the employees that have been working a whole lot more than their normal hours will be compensated, you know, whether it's through comp time, whether it's, you know, I don't know if we can afford to do comp time on these kind of issues, but I think we need to take care of these folks, you know, and make sure that they know upfront and not wait until a week or two.
My recommendation would be in the jail, where we're short on personnel regardless. Allowing more comp time only exacerbates the problem, so we will either have to pay or schedule time off during a slow time. But if this is declared a national disaster area or a disaster area from the governor's office, then there could be some reimbursement for this overtime implemented.
But we still need to pay it.
Right.
One way or another.
But we have not increased our overtime at the jail. I mean, there's nothing specifically that the jail public works.
Right. I think public works needs to be addressed. The other thing is all the purchases that we've made, we need to inventory them after this event, they're ready for the next one.
Well, most likely, we'll have a lot of rain, and that's what, that's what we're expecting, and they can take their comp time, but definitely, Commissioner Goss is on target. We have to make sure we provide for them.
If resources are, will allow it, and we'll bring this report back to the Commissioners' Court for your decision, but we would like to pay the overtime rates.
Let me say also that yesterday, we had a report from, from the warehouse that these people, the guys that are sand, filling up the bags, sand, they were so tired they want to actually collapse. So we want to pay more attention to what's going on over there, how many hours they're putting in. Maybe we should just rotate them, you know, so many hours this guy.
That's what they're doing. I know they are.
I know that there's a person that collapsed yesterday, so they were very, very tired.
In Brownsville?
Yes.
We appreciate the sheriff's cooperation with the prisoners at work. I know, I've been out to warehouse several times, and they've been there doing the sandbag filling and working around the clock. Appreciate that, Sheriff.
Till eight o'clock last night, right?
Yeah. I was out there at nine last night.
Nine-thirty, actually.
Actually left at eight.
Okay.
Judge, just to remind the department heads that it's extremely important that they document the time that the, that the workers are putting in related to the storm. If you call somebody in early, if you have them doing work, it's during their normal work hours, but they're actually focusing on storm preparations, to make the documentation in case we get that declaration, then we can get reimbursed for every expenditure to Cameron County issues at this time.
Good point.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So there's no specific action I believe we need to take, and so I'll hear a motion to table. Second, Commissioner Tamal, second by State and I. Both motions carries. Two, presentation of third quarter reports, quarter reports for the international bridge system. If you're ready for that, fine. If you're not, we can table it for another day.
Yeah, I think we passed out the reports. I didn't bring my report with me, but I think the last tab, the last tab that says Bridge System, that's basically the summary. The county's portion, we've got a positive variance of about $173,000 through the first three quarters of the fiscal year. We should be in relatively good shape.
That means that your revenues exceed your projected revenues or your net, your net balance exceeds?
Yeah, so that means when we look at our actual revenues with budgeted revenues and actual expenses with budgeted expenses, you know, we're, we're $173,000 above where we're supposed to be at this point.
All right, good. Move to approve.
Second.
Move to acknowledge my Commissioner Goss, second by Commissioner Tamal, only for discussion, all of the terms, second by State and I. Both motions carries. Three, presentation by David Strigley, Vice President, is that pronounced right?
Strigley.
Strigley? How do you pronounce your name?
Strigley?
Strigley, I'm sorry. Vice President, Brownsville Downtown Lions Club, with a donation of $2,500 towards the community parks handicap accessibility improvements.
Judge, Commissioners, David, we spoke, actually, he contacted me after he read about the article about, well, we didn't have handicapped facilities for playgrounds and so on, so he contacted me immediately after that article was written, and we met, we talked about, and he says that's, that's basically their mission, or one of their missions is to provide services to handicapped families or children that are special needs. So we told him that we're going to buy the equipment to accommodate all our parks, our community parks, and he wanted to give us a donation to offset or subsidize some of those, those costs that we spent.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, I do appreciate the opportunity to participate with you in reaching out to the, in meeting the needs of our children with special needs. It is very near and dear to the hearts of Lions Club International and especially here, and we work with, of course, the Lions Camp in Kerrville frequently, but there's a lot to be done locally as well, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that. Like I've ever said, as soon as we saw the article and realized the need was here and what it was, then we jumped on it, and that's what we hope to continue doing as needs arise in the county and the city of Brownsville and everywhere else. Lions Clubs are everywhere to be involved in that. So I hope other opportunities will come along, and it is a pleasure to present the check to Mr. Mendez for $2,500.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate y'all's commitment to the community and give our thanks to the members of your club.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, motion to, second, accept the check. Like Commissioner Benavides, second by who?
And gladly we'll receive more.
As soon as I knew that he had a check, I said, please sit down, have a seat.
All those in favor, sitting by State and I. Both motions carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, or endorse salary schedules. To any questions, concerns, comments, complaints, if not, do I hear a motion to, by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, sitting by State and I. Both motions carries. Claims, did I have?
Claims we presented, we're adding no additional claims. We want to put claims on a weekly action item due to our use of Positive Pay. Positive Pay is a feature in which we preload a data file to the bank, and the bank pays exactly off of that claim listing. So anytime that I bring something to Commissioners' Court, we need a specific action item, and we need to measure it against our Positive Pay file that we sent to the bank.
Move to approve, Judge.
We're not adding no additional claims.
No additional claims? But just a motion by Commissioner Goss to approve, second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor, sitting by State and I. All opposed, motion carries. Minutes, April 27. Are you all ready? Yes or no?
Yes. Motion to approve.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamal, any further discussion? All those in favor, sitting by State and I. Both motions carries. Eight, consideration and possible action regarding proposed development of a solid waste management facility. Do we have anything to report on that before or after executive session? If not, do I hear a motion to table that for right now? Motion by Commissioner Tamal, second by Commissioner Goss, any further discussion? All those in favor, sitting by State and I. Both motions carries. Nine, consideration and approval of purchase of computer equipment, necessary software and/or hardware required by a solid waste division of the Cameron County Transportation Department. The Water District, East Rio Hondo Water District, was not able to meet last night because of the impending storm, so they postponed the meeting, I think, till next week, I believe, and so we don't, we don't know what they're going to do yet. Do you have a report to give us on this?
Yes, we have looked at our accounts receivable software. We already own a software that can handle the job, and we are preparing to set it up as if we're actually going to implement it, and we can be ready to start billing at any time, probably within a 12, 10 to 12-day preparation.
The only thing on this billing issue, there's, I remember that there was things other than software that we needed to look at that would allow us to implement this program. I mean, and I just can't remember what they are right now because I've got too many other things on my head.
It's a collection issue that needs to be reverted. The other thing is agreements with the water districts in getting a data file from them on their billing and then comparing it to the data file that Red River has, and it's my office, it's going to need to match those two fields to make sure that we collect what we're all going to pay for.
Judge, I think the equipment you were thinking about was the sorting or the envelope stuffing machines and things of that nature. It really depends on the size. The district clerk's office has an automatic envelope stuffer that she uses, so if it's small enough, we'll be able to utilize that for any mailings we do, but if it's larger, we might want to bring it to the court.
Well, can you all just get together?
Card system, you don't need a stuffer.
Right.
And a hat set up.
We may need a burster of some sort. We're going to, the initial billing may be on an eight-and-a-half I-11 sheet because we're ready to function on that basis. The problem is the postage may be a little more on that particular avenue, but we're starting to prepare for the actual billing that we'll have set aside, ready to go, about one month billing supply, and ready to go when the court says, let's do it.
Okay, well, can you just get together? I know we're dealing with a storm right now, but as quickly as possible, let's get together with Mark and those people that we met with last time and figure out exactly what equipment we're going to need as soon as Rio Hondo makes a decision because we still have those well accounts that we have to bill on. All right, so motion to table at this time? Motion by Commissioner Tamal, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, sitting by State and I. Both motions carries. Ten, consideration, authorization to request bids for the renovation of Leviathan Building. Are you all ready for us to do that?
We did have a meeting last week, and we are making progress, but probably need about another week.
Okay, motion to table. Second, Commissioner Tamal, second by Commissioner Goss, any further discussion? All those in favor, sitting by State and I. Both motions carries. Eleven, consideration, authorization to change in direction of travel lanes at Veterans International Bridge at Los Fresnos.
I just passed out a map containing some proposed changes that we'd like to implement at the Veterans Bridge. You all know, we did an expansion of the lengths going into the import lot. Originally, we had two lanes for commercial vehicles going into the import lot, and with the expansion that we did, we added three lanes, so we now have five lanes going to the import lot for commercial vehicles. What we are proposing to do, right now, we've got, it's a four-lane bridge, we've got two lanes going southbound into Matamoros and two lanes coming northbound into Brownsville. The congestion that we have is on the way back from Matamoros, you know, where passenger vehicles start backing up and conflicting with the commercial traffic. The six years, or five, six years that the bridge has been open, I think only once or twice, has commercial traffic backed up beyond the line of demarcation from Matamoros into Brownsville, and that's because the computer system for commercial vehicles in Matamoros Brownsville, and that's because the computer system for commercial vehicles in Matamoros went down. So, in a meeting between US Customs, Mexican Customs, and the folks from Capufre, they came up with an idea of changing the direction of one of the southbound lanes that goes into Matamoros, where we would keep one southbound lane, and that lane would be used by both commercial vehicles and passenger vehicles. And then, northbound, we would add the other lane, so we would have three lanes coming back from Matamoros into the customs area, both for passenger vehicles and for commercial vehicles.
What does that leave going south?
One lane. But we would, we would do about a thirteen foot lane, thirteen and a half foot lane to where if a vehicle would be stranded, there'd be enough room to maneuver around that vehicle and, and not, not really impede the flow of traffic going into Mexico. This has been done at other bridges. I know at the Far Bridge, they did this a couple of years ago because the same problem they had of traffic coming in from the Mex, from the Mexican side into the US side and backing up. And it's worked pretty well in Far. And we met again last week with the agencies from Mexico and from the US, and they're proposing about a sixty day trial, just do a test, see how it works, you know, if it works out, you know, then we can consider leaving it that way permanently. If it doesn't work out, well, then, you know, we'll go back to our, our two and two lanes. If, if it is approved, then, you know, we'd go through about a, a two week period to inform the public of the, of the changes, and it'd be implemented sometime around the first of August.
I, I don't have a problem with doing it. I just, I just believe though that what this tells you is that we really need to start working on that second span issue now.
We can, and, and that's an option. We've looked at that option, but that's about a three, four million dollar project.
But it's still a project that I think it's gonna make a big difference.
I, I agree with you.
We're already at capacity at that bridge. We're at capacity on our, both of our Brownsville bridges now, and, you know, it takes us three to four years to get the permits approved for these, these bridges. And so, seems to me that even if we're looking at that kind of cost, it would be foolish of us not to start the process now of the, the, the process to obtain the necessary permits to build that.
Yeah, actually, the, the three, four million dollars would be just to add about two spans to the bridge. It wouldn't include the entire bridge, because with those two spans, what we could do is shift the commercial traffic over to that, to those, that new span, and we wouldn't need a presidential permit because within the existing permit, we're allowed to do that.
Right. We need to do it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see the Brownsville Navigation District Commercial Truck Bridge happening in the near future. From what I'm seeing, the development on that bridge, particularly in light of the, of the fact that, and what I'm hearing from Mexico is that they don't have the infrastructure on the Mexican side to support that bridge, and so, the chances of, of that bridge getting approved until that infrastructure is in place are, are very slight, whereas they have the infrastructure in place right now to support, um, a, the, the truck bridge that we have at Los Tomas, Los Tomates, and so that if we're at capacity and, and now, then, then we need to start the effort now to, to add that second span because of the timelines that are involved with the construction. So, my, I know that it's not on the agenda, but you need to put it on, you need to talk to John Hudson, and y'all need to get back to us and, and start putting together a plan on how we're, we're gonna start working on that second span.
Yeah, I can, I can come back, and the other thing to keep in mind is that half of the cost, you know, goes to the city of Brownsville.
Right.
Because the debt service state from...
Well, half the income goes to a loss.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do it.
And I will tell you, just, you know, in terms of our position, yeah, in terms of our position with respect to the, the commercial truck bridge in, or Brownsville, we have offered to work with them on that bridge. We've met with them, we've told them, we're in the business of building bridges, we're willing to, 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 to partner with you on another commercial truck bridge, and they have not expressed any interest in doing that, so we need to move forward with our agenda now.
I agree. To look at the report, the Los Indios Bridge had a 26% increase in commercial traffic. Veterans had a 5% increase in commercial traffic, so the, the commercial traffic is back, the meclador activity is back, so, uh, but I do have some, some, like I said, we had looked at that option of adding spans, and, and I'll, I'll bring that back to the commissioners' court.
As soon as possible. Move to acknowledge? Were you gonna say something, Commissioner?
I was gonna say, you've exhausted the process of communication with them, so, you know, we need to clarify that because there's...
I met with them for over an hour about two, two months ago, three months ago, and I just explained, you know, everything about how I thought, you know, you know, this is our business. We run, we build and run international bridges, you know? We, we're willing, we think, you know, that the, the bridge system should be a unified bridge system, and so, we're willing to work with them on this issue. And I think they, then, two weeks later, they made a decision to hire a consultant that, to, to, to go ahead and work on the bridge project and...
We have to move forward.
I move to approve the change of direction.
Just move.
Second.
I think...
Second.
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 Motion by Commissioner, right, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. Okay, consent items, items twelve through twenty-nine and travel item number thirty. Any questions, concerns, comments, complaints on any of the consent?
I, I just wanna double check on sixteen. I don't know who that gentleman is, and I just wanted to make sure that everything is in place for that background check and...
Constable Lopez.
Everything?
Yes, everything's clear.
Seventeen, sixteen, both?
Pete, you have two.
They know it, and we know it.
Okay. Just checking.
They're both, they're both, uh, they're both, uh, pretty, uh, Constable Lopez, Reserve Department.
Roberts.
All right, there was a motion by...
On items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, do we have some cost figures on those?
Cost figures on...
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
On maintenance?
Well...
No, it's bridge.
Is it just maintenance or improvements and maintenance?
Yeah, this is just a joint use agreement, um...
Text dot.
Yeah, with, with the irrigation companies.
Because the agreement says we're gonna maintain them forever and ever.
Right, we do that on, on bridges, that text dot comes in as part of their off-system program. We go in and we acquire, or we secure the right of way, um, and then we, we do the maintenance on those bridges. They're off-system bridges.
So, these are off-system bridges for text dot?
Yeah, it's from that system.
Okay, all right. There was a motion by Commissioner Benavides to approve the consent and travel items, and second by Commissioner Tamal, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. Motion to go on executive session. Second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. We're now in executive session, pursuant to V.C. Development Code Act in 551.071, 1A and 2, 551.0712, and 5551.072. All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. If we could keep it down just for a second, a little bit? All right, we'll, we'll be finished in just a second, okay? All right, item number thirty-two A, possible action on confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus Faulkner USA formerly known as Landmark. Motion to acknowledge report of council and county judge, my commissioner...
Second.
Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamal, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. Thirty-two, uh, possible action on confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning issues began in the Cameron County Detention Center in the Cameron County Sheriff Administration Building. No discussion was had on that matter. Do I hear a motion table?
Second.
Wood, second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. Thirty-two, B, C, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel one thirty-one for Primera Road project in Primera. Precinct Four, motion...
Payment of eight hundred bucks.
Okay, my commissioner, Garcia's second by Commissioner Tamal, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. Thirty-two, C, D, possible action on confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning the advancing building on a matter which is duty of the attorney to the governmental body and the Texas Department of Health and Public Health, federal comment to state bar Texas security conference of this chapter. Motion to ignore before it comes. My commissioner, uh, Tamal, second by Commissioner Wood?
Me.
Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I. Most motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Hold on. I noticed we have a representative from Congressman Ortiz's office, perhaps he wants to address us? Do you wanna address us on behalf of Denise is out here? Does she wanna address us?
Well, if she does, we gotta hurry.
Yeah, because we gotta...
We gotta go.
I wasn't expecting to address you, but since you're all here, thank you very much for having me. On behalf of Congressman Ortiz, I just wanted you to know that we stand ready to assist you. Our office has been in contact with FEMA, we provided a lot of numbers, and they've been going over the instructions on what has to be documented, and just to let you know that we stand ready to assist the county, the city, in any way that we possibly can. And thank you for the good work that you're doing. Your staff is incredible, and I just wanna say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna prepare for Hurricane Emily, and we'll take her on. Thank you.
We, we did announce that you had called in your office in Washington, D.C. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Judge, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn. My commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamal, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state and I.